Good evening. Welcome to the Joliet Junior College Regular Board of Trustee Meeting, Wednesday, September 13th, 2023. I'd like to call to order.
Row call. Trustee Broderick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn? Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Trustee Ellis?
Present.
Trustee Bazinski?
Here.
Next item-
We do have a quorum.
Secretary Protump, Jake, can you? Item 1.03, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Buck, in one of your waning hours, could you do this for us?
All right, good feeling now. You should be over there.
Yeah, I changed it on you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.04, Need a Motion to Enter into a Closed Session?
So moved.
Second. For?
2C1, 2C2, and 2C11.
Which are?
You have the definitions right in front of you.
None.
Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Lee? Oh, I'm sorry, she's in. Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Student, or, Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we going to move to the other conference room? We're going to be about approximately an hour and 15 minutes before we return to the public meeting. 1.05, Return to Public Session. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
1.06, Public Comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. We have two public comments. The first one is from Nick Nassenbenny. He is here regarding the wrestling community.
Okay.
And Nick?
Come to the podium, sir. Yes, sir.
As a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during its monthly board meeting. Per Policy 015501, the purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the board on agenda items, keeping in mind that comments should be in good taste, and please demonstrate consideration for others. Please refrain from inappropriate, irrelevant, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allowed five minutes to speak. Thank you for following this procedure.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I just want to say thank you for taking the time. My name's Nick Nassenbenny. I was the assistant coach for the men's wrestling team. I wanted to speak today just to address my concerns and present some information to you regarding the 2023-2024 wrestling season. As you guys know, there was voted to have men's and the women's conjoined under the same staff this year, but as I expected, the men's and women's wrestling, or head coach for the wrestling coach position is still vacant. I understand that having both programs under the same staff looks great on paper, but it's not feasible for just two coaches to handle two completely different sports, as well as with the season starting next month, I believe that there are too many unanswered variables at this time to start the women's program this season. I believe that women's wrestling would be a great addition to the college and in the future, but at this point, we're rushing into a decision that is not only going to be detrimental to our student athletes on the wrestling team, but also harmful to the college image when women's wrestling isn't able to get off the ground due to how fast we're moving forward. In a previous board meeting where women's wrestling was proposed, it was stated that men's and women's wrestling would be like men's and women's golf, but that couldn't be farther from the truth. They're completely different in every single way. Better comparison would be water polo and swimming. Women's wrestling is called freestyle, which is the wrestling that you see in the Olympics, where men's style is called folk style, which is the style that you see at the high school level. Over half of the moves that use in the women's wrestling are illegal in men's wrestling, so having the practices go at the same time, it wouldn't mesh well. The rules are different, the scoring is different, the match lengths are different, the move, with the moves being different and some being illegal in the men's sport and not in the women's, the practices couldn't go at the same time because it wouldn't mesh well due to the styles. Different moves that work, different muscles, and require different workouts designated to improve those areas. Different styles means two different practices have to be run because what you can do in one sport, you can't do in the other. So now the coaching staff is going to have to stay later, develop practice plans with no addition to help or pay increase as well. Women wear different uniforms, haircut singlets that show less skin. All of this would need to be ordered months in advance that we do not have at this time. New schedules need to be set that we don't have at this time. All funding opportunities were forced to be put on hold until the new coaches were established, so we have no new funding regarding fundraising. Referees need to be booked a month in advance. We don't have any of that right now. Hydration testing and weight certification need to be set months before the season starts. The season starts in a few weeks. That needs to be done in order for the athletes to compete and set their weight for the upcoming season. So if they don't do it in a certain amount of time, it just delays their season, which could lead to injury and further issues. I don't understand how this would, I was told that there will be additional finances due to funding by a generous donor for the 2023-2024 season. With that being said, I don't understand how that couldn't lead to additional coach for the women's team and assistant coach as well. This decision, having both programs at the same time, I believe would negatively impact our current student athletes in this upcoming season, which isn't right for our athletes that have given their heart and soul to the college for the past two years. My fear is that this will lead to the end of wrestling at Joliet Junior College. Our program was on an uphill climb this season, bringing home an All-American as well as four national qualifiers. Our All-American is currently at the Division One level. With the coaching changes, three years ago, we've finally changed the culture and are uphill climbing to this trajectory, and I fear that this will derail that. With this season starting next month, my ask is that we treat women's wrestling as an individual sport that it is and have a different head coach and assistant coach for the program. Or if keeping them as the same sport is the only option, we allow for two more assistant coaches to give these athletes the equal resources, attention, and time commitment that they deserve. Thank you for your time, and as always, go Bulls. If you have any questions, but I'm almost out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Nassenberry.
Appreciate it.
Karen, do we have any additional public comments?
We do. We have Dan Cattarello, who is also representing the wrestling community.
Thank you, distinguished members of the board, the president, and others in the attendance. I stood probably right there 10 years ago at this board meeting. Some of you are still here, remember this, and I read a letter from Larry Wolshager. He was a wrestler alum in the 80s. And I never met the man, but I read this letter that essentially said, without wrestling, this guy would not have been who he is today, which is a very generous man. In that talk, there was a vote to bring wrestling back to the school. It was about a two-year campaign with me and several of our local coaches, so about 2011, 2012, and then I read that letter right about there. We've been at many board meetings, sat telling the board, convincing of the benefit of wrestling for this area. There are kids going to different schools, and we thought we can do this when they were going to build the EC. They had dropped football previously, and so sure enough, the program got started. They had some general success in the four years with the prior coach. A good friend of mine, Pat O'Connell, was part of this campaign, who passed away in 2019. I stayed involved with the coach at the time, AJ, just a little bit, but he moved on to Triton in 2021. I had looked and been told that there was no coach. I'm a very busy individual, and I just thought of my friend Pat and how he accepted his condition when he passed away. He was 62. Very much like a wrestler, just fought very well. And I called the athletic department and said, I'll throw my hat in there. I haven't coached in a while. I've coached high school, and I was helping out at Joliet West most recently before that. I was interviewed. I reached out to Coach Nick and said, look, if I take this position, I want you to be my assistant. I accepted the job, and that was the COVID year of '21. We had some good success, but it was a very difficult season, as you can imagine, for any sport, especially a contact sport like wrestling. We committed to those student athletes. We recruited a bunch of kids the following year. Some are in attendance today. Some of them weren't able to stay the whole time. We were prepared for to compete this season, which would have, we would have had some things that Coach Nick mentioned already done. But in June, I was told that we have to eliminate men's wrestling so we can bring in women's wrestling, and I was offered that job. Again, I cannot do it. It's just too much for me and my bandwidth. And again, as predicted, the position's not filled yet, and we are hoping and praying that somebody is, seeing this as something they can do. But again, every day that goes by, there's an increased chance of these kids getting injured if they don't get their workouts in. There's the weight obligation they need to do. We would have done it about this time right now, but that was put on hold as Coach Nick had mentioned. I felt obligated to come here because of an incident that happened last week. I know that's going to be addressed by the senior leadership of the school, and I appreciate that wholeheartedly. Because I had recruited about a dozen kids, and there's some returners, I thought it would be good to come to the board, because I know that's where like the rubber meets the road, and you talk to them, and they'll listen. It's a very congenial group, and that's what we're here for, is to just appeal that it gets changed, it gets slowed down. I think because of women's wrestling is so popular in this area, it should be done well, which Coach was saying, either more coaches or the same resource, equitable resources. I know there's additional funding. We just feel that it could be either next year or some other way to make sure that our guys feel welcome. They don't feel welcome. There's nothing been done for them. No paperwork's been helped in how they should be able to get ready if there is a coach. And again, this incident last week was something that I said, you know what, let me speak to the board. As Nick had mentioned, this is very different sport. There's nuances to women's wrestling, or just women's sport, period. There's nuances to women's sports. But a contact sport, being a different sport, it's wrestling, but it's a different type of style, like we were saying earlier. There's illegal moves, different type of strategies, and so on, that it wouldn't be equitable to have one coach and one assistant for both. It would just would not work well, and again, with the same resources. Again, I stand here humbled. Again, the coaching, as my friend Nick had mentioned, was just an honor. I had never been at this level before. My father went to school here. I'm a physician in the city of Joliet. I want what's best for the community. I think wrestling was being equitably brought in for the girls separately than the men. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cattarello. Any additional public comments?
None that I'm aware of.
Item 1.07, Communications. Kelly Roder Tannelli?
Good evening, everyone. I am pleased tonight to, if you've not already met Brian Robb from Lion Electric, you'll meet him shortly. He's joining us here tonight to talk about the wonderful partnership, particularly in the last two years, that Lion Electric has had with Joliet Junior College. You may remember that last month, they opened the country's, not just this region, but the country's largest electric vehicle bus manufacturing plant right here in Joliet and right here in our district. And so what does that mean for an institution like us? We work with them to build pipelines of skilled workers. And so he's joined us tonight to talk a little bit about what we've been doing, particularly over the last year. So I'll hand it over to you, Brian.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much, Kelly, and thank you, Dr. Namu and the board, for letting me speak tonight. I will try to keep it brief, and everything Kelly said is absolutely correct. We've, not only is workforce development key to Lion, and regionally speaking, it's just as important, but it is critical for Lion, especially in this stage, as Kelly just mentioned. We just opened up roughly six-ish weeks ago, and, you know, brass tacks, we will have roughly 1,400 jobs out of that factory, and the vast majority of those jobs are still open, and will be filled in the next three to five years, with probably about 1,000 filled in the next year to year and a half. So we very, very much need skilled workers, and what better way to do that than to train those workers directly in Will County, you know, a stone's throw away, 10 minutes north up the road. And just to quote Dr. Namu from the opening, from his excellent speech, we really do view JJC and in our factory, we view our factory as kind of an extension of the classroom at JJC, and that's why the last two years, especially the last, you know, six months to a year, we've really been pushing and meeting with Kelly and with Dane's team and the workforce development team and the auto manufacturing, all of that. I mean, and we're going to continue meeting with them, probably to a degree of annoyance to them, and that's okay to us. But we very much need students that are skilled and that know how to work on our vehicles, and what better way to do that, honestly, than to work locally, to provide good jobs locally, and to work with an institution that we know is dedicated and shares, frankly, the very similar values to us in terms of sustainability and clean energy and providing good-paying jobs to a lot of students that might not have the opportunity anyway. So programs like the one at JJC don't come along too often, and I don't think a factory like our, especially clean energy factory, those don't come along too often either. I think we're the first auto manufacturing facility in the Chicagoland area roughly 60 years. So it's very exciting, and it's something that, you know, that we need. It's not, you know, all sunshine and rainbows. We need it. So these jobs are critical to the next year, two years at Lion, and we are dedicated to working with the team at JJC and are excited to continue to do so. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any questions about how we're going to approach this going forward.
Thank you, Brian. Does the board have any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. At this time, we don't have any questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Item 1.1, A Moment of Silence. Dr. Namu?
Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to come before the college community and offer a moment of silence. You know, I'm struck by the list here representing not just years, decades of service, individuals who have, you know, really meant a lot to the college. And I don't know, this particular month just struck, you know, the sanctity of life and the fragility of life. So allow me to offer and ask the college community to join me in a moment of silence for the following individuals. First up, Bernadina O'Keefe, aunt and godmother to our very own trustee Maureen Broderick. Frank Elbarico, JJC retiree in criminal justice, having served the college from 1969 to 2006. Donna Diding, grandmother to Chansey Hoffman, a financial aid office assistant with us. Brandon Calderone, JJC student. Charles Morgan, father of Jennifer Morgan, our curriculum specialist. Judy Bailey, mother to dispatch supervisor Jean Smith and grandmother to Gage Muller, our campus security officer. Marjorie Durnell, JJC retiree, student center secretary from 1996 to 2006, and aunt of Stephanie Dominico in our Office of Student Rights and Responsibilities as our office assistant. Dr. Debbie Fitzgerald, JJC professor of nursing since 2008. Chairman, college community, please join me in a moment of silence for the following individuals.
Item 1.2, Selected Reports. 1.2.1, Board of Trustee Approval of October as Disability Employment Awareness Month Proclamation. Mr. Valdez?
Good evening, Chairman Bazinski, Dr. Namu, members of the board, and JJC community. It is a pleasure to introduce Mason Patterson. Mason is a 25-year-old JJC student who truly enjoys learning and being a student at JJC. He is a treasurer of the Disability Awareness Club, and he is involved with multiple campus events throughout the year.
Mason?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's good, good.
Please bear with me. I'm a little nervous. Whereas in 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law, ADA is a civil rights legislation that works to increase the inclusion of people with disabilities in all aspects of community life, including employment. And whereas National Disability Employment Awareness Month is nationwide, is a nationwide campaign celebrating the skills and talents workers with disabilities bring to workplaces. And whereas the month of October is designated to reflect the important role diversity plays in the workplace. And Joliet Junior College advocates respect and inclusion for every individual by demonstrating courtesy and civility in every endeavor. And whereas Joliet Junior College pledges to promote and recognize the diverse strengths of its employees, students, and to value and celebrate the unique attributes, characteristics, and perspectives of every individual. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois hereby proclaims the month of October Disability Employment Awareness Month in Illinois Community College District 525.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Mason.
Mason, good job.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Adopted, sorry, adopted this 13th day of September, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mason.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item 1.2.2, Finance and Administrative Services Report. Karen Kissel?
Chairman, if I may, as Karen's coming to the podium here, this presentation is in response to questions that the administration received from the board, and some have been, you know, similar themed. So we thought we'd invite Karen here to do a presentation, a very high-level presentation for the different areas she oversees. And I just want to kind of say one thing before Karen gets up here. You know, not going to embarrass her too much, but we're very thankful for Karen and her leadership. Her team, you know, they were, unfortunately, had to report directly to the president for a few months, and I understand that was really difficult on them. Nonetheless, they did all the work that they're supposed to do and more. And I would just offer that this is a team that, you know, is not out front. You know, doesn't get a whole lot of accolades. In fact, you know, you only hear their names oftentimes when things go wrong. But they're also the individuals who are responsible for procuring everything around us. They're also the individuals responsible for keeping us safe 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. They're the individuals that, you know, plow our streets, keep the campus looking beautiful, maintain the AEDs, and on and on. And have I done a good job as your hype man?
Thank you for my presentation.
Thank you. And with that, and with that, Karen Kissel?
Thank you, Dr. Namu. Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to join you tonight to talk a little bit about the Finance and Administrative Services team. Our divisional goals, we put students at the heart of everything we do. We try to provide an environment to drive enrollment, retention, and a positive experience. The same for faculty and staff. We'd like to provide an environment that attracts and retains employees, that's safe, a positive environment, that's clean, not only inside the classroom but outside the classroom. We like to make sure that the technology is all in good working order. The furniture is the most up-to-date current furniture. It's space that people are proud to go to work to and a space that students are proud to learn in. We also are focusing on the strategic plan. We're actively participating in executing plan initiatives. We're providing financial oversight and governance for all strategic projects and budgeting, and we provide risk assessment and mitigation planning. This is the team that I have the privilege of leading. I'd like them to be acknowledged. Donna Bennett, who I'm sure is watching, so thank you, Donna. Brandon Campbell, our chief of police. Matt Stevenson, our executive director of business and auxiliary services. Jethiup, our executive director of financial services and our controller. Pat Van Dyne, our executive director of facility services. And Karen Anderson, who's not here today, she's at an ERMIA conference, but she's our director of risk management, and she's part of the newly formed Division of Risk Management and Compliance. In this group, there's approximately 250 people, and they provide about 1,800 years of service to Joliet Junior College. Campus police, campus police are focused on providing a safe environment with a high level of customer service. You see them everywhere on campus. Oftentimes, they're the first people that students, parents, and new members of campus come to visit before anybody else. How do we do that? We have experienced police and safety personnel. I added it up, and of the 16 fully sworn officers we have on campus, they collectively have 243 years of policing experience. They're involved in over 13 law enforcement organizations across Illinois. They have, they're assigned to the Will County Major Crimes Task Force as investigators. They're assigned to the Joliet Special Operations Squad as negotiators. They're assigned to the Joliet Special Operations Squad as team members and snipers. We have 18 campus safety officers. They're not only campus safety officers who assist our students and parents, they're also firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics. We have dispatchers that are monitoring our campus 24 hours a day. We have 774 cameras. We have 1,713 door access points that are monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week. As you know, you approve the slot cameras. We have seven of them across all of our campuses that are watched constantly. Our police officers and our community service officers are engaged in so many activities across not only our district but on campus. Again, you see them everywhere. They meet with students. They meet with students, they talk with communities, they're approachable. They also provide emergency response training. One of our highlights this year was that we had a Run, Hide, Fight training seminar with the community, with the entire community. It's in, in the event that we have, unfortunately, if we have an active shooter. This year, our focus is being accredited by the Illinois Law Enforcement Accredited Program. I think you might remember that we, the Police Department, in conjunction with the Grants Office, received an $82,000 grant that brought a software to assist us in meeting this goal of being an accredited department. Business and Auxiliary Services. You know, we're focused on supporting the student experience and college operations. The unique, the unique thing about the Business and Auxiliary Services Department is it's not just procurement. It's food service, it's the bookstore, it's the print shop, it's the mailroom. It's receiving and it's external events, things that go unnoticed. But what I can tell you is that the, the mailroom delivered 854,000 packages this year. The procurement department issued 40 RFPs this year. We've been focusing on trying to improve the Business Enterprise Program, minority spending for women, minorities, and disabilities. In fiscal year 2022, we had $2.3 million worth of spend. In '21, we had $836,000 worth of spend. We're trying to work with community members to assist them to increase this, to increase this spend across our college campus. The bookstore, we have been trying to support students to make course materials more, more costly, or more, less costly for them. So in, in 2018, 1% of our digital, of our course materials were digitally available. Now we have 69% of our course materials are digitally available. There was a $200,000 savings in what students would have spent over that time period in order to get the same type of materials, but this is an electronic version. In food service, I asked to provide some statistics. We served 87,745 customers this year. I asked what were the biggest items of service. Bottled drinks, we sold 33,576, who knew? And then the, the biggest item that students buy is items from the grill and the fryer, 28,995. So I thought that was kind of interesting information to understand how many people go through our cafeteria on an annual basis. When you look at the Finals, Financial Services Department, there are five areas. There's finance, and the finance team oversees $100 million in investment in cash management annually. The payroll department, they issue 1,600 W-2s. They also process 26 payrolls for 1,200 individuals every year. They hear Christmas break, holiday break, in the evenings, to make sure that everybody gets paid. It's a really remarkable team. Accounts payable, they process 5,710 payments. Again, these are just numbers, but it's things that people do every day to keep this operation running. Grants, the grants team manages 45 grants. They make sure that we're compliant with all the rules and regulations that are associated with that grant. We get a clean audit every year. The bursar's office, they manage 6,500 payment plans. And I'd like to acknowledge that for 51 years, we've presented a balanced budget to this board. You've approved a ba- a balanced budget. Also, the finance team gets an award for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And this award is provided to us by the Government Finance Officers Association. And I just want to read what this award is about. It's in your book every year, but it's a certificate of achievement. It was originally established in 1945, and it was to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, to prepare an annual comprehensive financial report that evidenced the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving this goal. We have been getting this award every year. And that is really a tribute to Jeff Heap and his team. Facility services, you walk around this campus, you can tell the pride that the facilities team has. The campus is immaculate, the grounds look beautiful. Everything is done, and the attention to detail is exceptional. They really continue, and the college really continues to invest in our facilities, to provide an environment, again, that's conducive to learning and teaching and to enjoying extracurriculars here. All of the facilities that we have been investing in over the last few years have been LEED certified, which means they're green. You can look at this list of facilities, you've seen it over and over again. But this just shows the investment that the Board of Trustees has made in this college. It's incredible. When I look forward to the upcoming year, we've been talking about a mental health facility. We're going to build a best-in-class mental health facility. There's been a small team of people who've been going across Illinois to look at different facilities, to bring that to JJC, and then some. We're also looking at moving into Grundy County. There's a team of people who've been working under, the last few months, under the direction of Dr. Farmer, that is comprised of stakeholder, stakeholders within Grundy. I know President Namul has talked about it. There are people not limited to Mayor Brown and other city officials, to leaders from Procter &amp; Gamble, from the Vocational Center in Grundy, from the Chamber of Commerce, all to look at what would be possible in the future for Joliet Junior College. There's also focus here on campus of sustainability. If you look around campus, you see all the boxes here in containers. We focus on sustainability. Since 2009, we've reduced our own landfill waste by 61%, and we're moving forward every year to make that even better. Finally, the Risk Management and Compliance Division. We're really putting a focus this year on reducing risk across the campus, improving safety across our campuses. We're looking at college policies and procedures to make sure that they're current and accurate and best-in-class. We're also ensuring that the college is compliant with all federal, state, local, and other agency rules that we need to be compliant with in order to keep operating as an institution. I just wanted to focus on some achievements that we made this year. First off, in all the AEDs across the campuses, of which there's 78, we placed Narcan, which is the reversal for opioid use if someone is overdosing. Trustee Ellis had the opportunity of being with Cabinet last week when we were trained by one of our nurses on how to administer Narcan if in the event we come across someone that's overdosing. We're going to be deploying that training across the campus. Perry Weather System, we now have an advanced weather system on our campus that in the event that there's some weather event that's coming close to campus, we're notified in different ways. We're also going to be rolling out a free app. It's called Wolf Safe, and we've developed this in conjunction with the Police Department. It's a comprehensive safety app that's really pretty fascinating. I hope to be able to demo it with you in the future. But it's a mobile blue light, so if you press that button, the police know you are, where you are on campus. It's an opportunity to walk with someone. You press the button, they know where you are. It's a, you can press a button to let people know, I'm okay, I'm safe. There's a button there that you press that if you're in a situation where you feel uncomfortable, a phone call will ring you back to let you know that. You could say, oh, Mom, it's you? Okay, oh, I gotta go. And it'll let you exit a situation gracefully. So we should be deploying that within the next month. So that's an overview of the division. Thanks for listening. Do you have any questions?
Vice Chairman, Chairwoman, do you have any questions?
Just real quick, on some of the screens that you had displayed, you named some individuals, like, were you just trying to give us their years of service, like right here? Or are these all the people that work in that department?
No, just their years of service. I just wanted to acknowledge them. When you look at the years of service in this division especially, there are a number, a large number of people who've been over here over 20 years. So in the Police Department, Sergeant Jeff Smith, Officer Chris Luttrell, and Officer Joe Elkes. In the Financial Service Department, Julianne Brooks, 30 years. Patricia Manke, 30 years. Lori Carpenter, 29 years. Michelle Ecklin, 24 years. And Jeff Heap, 21 years. Thank you, Jeff. In facilities, this is incredible. Shirley Hacker has been here for 49 years. Tom Anderson, 36 years. That's how we add it up to 1,800 years of service in my division, just from these people alone. Tom Sally, 36 years. Doran Musin, 32 years. Mike Riola, 31 years. Ginger Hammond, 30 years. It's really a testament to the leadership in that division. It's a testament to the work they do, the pride they have in this area. So thank you for asking that question, but I just wanted to acknowledge them, at least even if quietly, so.
Yes, thank you so much.
It's a lifetime, right? That people spend and enjoy their time here, that they give to us.
Trustee Broderick, do you have any questions?
Question I have is, you talked about all the security and everything. And I know on the roads lately, they have the monitors where they can identify license plates. Well, we have that in our two entrances so that in case anything does occur, that we have the ability to track if somebody is not on campus? Because do we register the license plates of the students so that we are familiar with them? So if something does happen?
We do. Those are the flat cameras that the Board of Trustees approved a few months ago.
So that's.
So we have seven flat cameras across all of our campuses, and we've used them.
So seven of them, correct?
Yes.
And then, just out of curiosity, who is our treasure then? Is, are you the treasure or is Jeff?
Jeff Heap is the treasure.
Treasure, okay, thank you.
Trustee Lee.
No, no questions.
Trustee Harris.
Being you, I appreciate the thorough report, it helps me understand.
Oh, thank you. I'm here almost a year, so I understand. I can't say new girl anymore, but I think that was actually eliminated from what I was using in the first month.
The name with the one after it. Trustee Mahalik.
I'd just say thanks for the report as usual.
Oh, thanks, Trustee Mahalik.
You never disappoint, so I appreciate it.
Trustee Ellis.
Thank you for your presentation.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. 1.2.3, the Faculty Union Report, and I understand Dr. Marsink went home because he wasn't feeling well. One thing we'll miss out of him, and I always like this each board meeting, when we have our moment of silence, Dr. Marsink is always here with a story or a personal touch to the faculty memories and things at the board. We don't know a lot of these names, and he brings them, you know, to our hearts when he does that. And so I do miss that from him. 1.2.4, Adjunct Faculty Union Report, Ms. Laura Disco.
Hello?
Now it's on. I'm, I'll be brief. I have a couple of things. We had the Main Street, and it was great to see all of the students and the student activities, all the activity on campus today. I talked to some of the groups, and they were really encouraged about getting new members and growing their, their activities, and it was a real positive experience. The other thing is, I took a walk down to look at the new Adjunct Faculty Center, and it's making real progress. Hopefully, we'll be in there soon, but it, it looks great so far. So I appreciate the work that's being done on that. And with that, I will call it an evening. So thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Item 1.3, Minutes, 1.3.1, the Approval of Minutes for the Regular Meeting Held on August 16, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item 1.3.2, the Review of Board Retreat Notes Held on August 23, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item 1.4, the Approval of Our Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item 1.5, Approval of Consent Agenda As Presented.
So moved.
Second. I'd like items 3.2.1, 3.2.2, and 3.2.3 pulled.
Any other items?
We still need to vote on the regular consent agenda before we go to the items pulled. Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
You can do the 3.2.1 and 2 together.
Agenda item 3.2.1. Motion, second.
Motion. It's the same concern I have for both of them, so I'm just saying they could put it together if he wants.
Is there a second to the motion on 3.2.1?
I'll second. What's the question on the VNG Committee?
Well, my only concern and question is, last month I asked if we could have those questions of concern that shows that there was, to us as the board members, and I said, they said we were going to see it this month. Remember those five or six things, Karen, that I had mentioned in regards to, do we know that this is acceptable? Financial issues and all that stuff? How do we know? And that's why I'm asking again, how do we know? And that's why I pulled both 3.2.1 and 2.2, because I don't know if they are sound or not based on just seeing what's in print. It was, I was told we'd see that there was those things followed this month. Am I?
Chairman, if I may, just, Trustee Broderick, can you clarify your question again?
Yeah, what do you?
There were, there were six questions I asked to have back in August, so that we could have them, or I should say in June. In June, so that we could definitely see that there was responsibility, there was fiscal responsibility. I don't have those questions in front of me right now.
They were, the, you mean fiscal responsibility, were they under, were they under budget? Is that what you're trying to say?
Right, and that we've had experience with them or anything of that nature. There were six questions that I gave.
Well, we, we, they, they were, the one unfortunately is out, that's for the IT, no, which one? This is the playground equipment, is it the one you're talking about? That one unfortunately was slightly over budget. We only had, we're only, we, this is the second time it's out for bid. And we received a, this time, we didn't receive anything, any bidders last time. Received one bidder this time, it was like $5,000 over, over bid.
I just want to make sure they're financially stable, that we're entering into something that is responsible. That's why I gave you those questions of concern of identifying to us as the board, so that we can see that they were checked, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, that, they're all checked, and then the, the second one was actually checked, and Cryon Olson has done a lot with us, and they were significantly under budget. So, I mean, so they were all vetted and checked in the background and licensed and bonded, I think. I think, wasn't that one, Pat, wasn't that one with, didn't see our learner bid that one, but they, they misfiled some paperwork or didn't do that correctly? So, so they went, they were, their bid was thrown out unfortunately because it was not a responsible bid, so.
So can those things be included on these things, as I had asked before, or is that not doable? Because I thought that was what was going to happen for this month, because we said last month it would be on this month's report.
Are you asking about, does it compare to the budget? Or are you asking, is this vendor fiscally sound?
I think what she, what we did in the past, what we want, what we received in the past is you received what we budgeted, what the bid actually went for, we actually received.
Have we had any experience? Are they financially sound? Have we checked their financials? Things of that nature, that I think we as the board, when we're making these decisions, should have sound judgment on their finances.
I think that's part of the actual.
It's something that.
VNG Committee too as well.
But we don't, we don't see that when you're doing, when this is being done. All we see is the one bid, and then we see another one that had a bid that was a failure to bid because it came under. I was just asking, is that going to be something that we could put in as a practice?
Can I say something real quick? Usually when vendors put in a bid, they have to be bonded, there's a process in the procurement, in the procurement process, that there's a process that the vendors have to qualify, even. even to bid. So, are you suggesting that we're not vetting them properly for them to have gotten to this point?
No.
Because they have to be financially responsible if we're even going to accept a bid.
Have we ever done business with them? Are they financially sound? Things of that nature, and I gave you those questions. If you want me to bring them back, I'll bring them back again.
There's a package that each bidder has to submit. That's why, for example, Sierra Leonard from Joliet did not get the award for the Sub D groundwater sump pit. They need to provide us a bid bond, they need to provide us a W-9 to show that they're licensed to provide these services in the state of Illinois. They need to provide us a certificate of insurance, that says they have insurance with a minimum of $1 million per instance and $3 million in the aggregate. We don't always get their financial statements, but we can't disqualify somebody if they've provided the prerequisite documents that are listed in the Illinois Procurement Code. So, unless someone is disqualified by the, the state of Illinois, if someone bids and they're the lowest, most responsible bidder, and they've provided all the required documents per law, we need to give them that contract. So, if you're asking to see all of the documents that they're submitting with their materials, so that's what we, that's what we review. If we hear things, you know, Matt's team will follow up and do some follow up, but for the most part, if they submit all their materials and their licenses in the state of Illinois to do business, and they're not disqualified, we proceed with that bidder.
Okay, well then I guess, when I asked last month, I was looking for that, and you said yes, so that's why I've asked, and apparently then I'm, it's not going to happen. So I'll disregard it then.
Motion to move forward with the vote? Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
3.2.2, the Bid for the Sub D Groundwater Sump Pit.
Motion to approve?
This, well, let me just make a note, this is precursor to our report, this one came in well under budget. We do have Cryer Olson, which is actually redoing, is, they're replacing our air handling, they stepped in for the default, not default, actually, no, the default under on their air handling, right, plan, is that right? So, they stepped in, they, they, they're well represented, business to community, so, so I, I think they, I think the Buildings and Grounds Committee did a great job vetting this one, so.
Have we had actual experience with them?
We have, they're actually doing, well, they're doing our, remember our air handler there, the CDV project, they're the one that.
That's them.
Be doing that as well, so, we've had experience with them throughout the years. We've also had experience with Sierra Leonard, which is the one that did not submit the bid bond properly, and unfortunately, you miss that step, there's nothing we can do, so, we're tied by legal hands, so, so. But I, I've been a union shop in the area too, well, well, Cryer Olson, and they're a very reputable company, but so is Sierra Leonard, I'm not going to bash any of our people, so, missed one little piece of paperwork, though unfortunately, there's nothing we can do as well, so like I just said, so. And my Buildings and Grounds Committee is, I don't want to talk bad about our committee in the area, but I think they're the best committee that I serve on, so, so, sorry, Finance Committee.
Do we have a motion to vote on this? Ready to vote?
No, we do.
Yeah.
Ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item 3.2.3, the RFP for Legal Counsel.
Do we have a motion to approve? In second.
I motion.
Is there any discussion?
Got your timer set? My, my concern on this item falls under, one, we never had any motion to do anything with regards to an RFP. We did lose an associate, we did not lose the firm of our, of Rathbun Servant and Cozal. So, if we're going to look at choosing another, an additional one, I would say that we still maintain and keep Rathbun Servant and Cozal because of the seven-year history with them. We are not losing them, we are only losing one of their associates. So, if that be the case, the only way I would approve it is if we also additionally keep, because RCK should be still included, because there was nothing that was gone out that showed that we were removing a firm. No motion was made, no motion was made for an RFP, and that's where I remain.
For clarification, I don't think we're removing any firm. I think they are still involved, is my understanding, so they will still be a firm, but we may go forward with a, a different primary firm.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We already had the motions.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik? Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I was going to tell you the other time where I was going too, so.
It's a lot of work these times. Hang on, a lot of pressure.
Item 4, New Business and Old Business, 4.2, Agenda Request by, by a trustee. I'm starting to stretch this time, Mr. Mahalik, any Agenda Request items?
I do not.
Ms. Ellis?
I do not.
Vice Chair one?
No, I do not, thank you.
Trustee Broderick?
I have some policy ones that I think we need to upgrade. 1.36, Board Request for Information. And the reason I'm asking and talking about that is because I had asked for a contract, and then I had to FOI it because I had to come in. Anything I think that is considered public, where there's no redaction done to it, we should be able to, be able to get a copy of it and not have to come in and read it, so I think that there should be some verbiage to that, that clarifies that if it is a public document, we should be able to receive the public document.
There is a policy for that, and it does have specific language in it, and if it is anything that has to do with personnel and other issue, there's many reasons why we as trustees should not be allowed to just come in and take any type of documents.
I did not say that, I said if it's public information, that's a public document, and that's where I'm being very specific, if it's a public document, I FOIA the same document that I asked for, that I had to come in for, but I was able to get the full document FOIA'd, I should not have to FOIA something if it's a public document. So, we need to revise the verbiage in there, to revise it, to say, if it's a public document, we should be able to obtain it without having to come in and review it under lock and key of whatever.
We can look at it. We can look at it.
Yeah, I, I think we should. I mean, I'm just bringing to your attention. Then I was looking at 8.03.00, Authorization of Expenditures. I think there needs to be a little bit more clarity or information needed in that, because I've been going through policies, I'm having fun reading policies lately, so that one I just looked at that I thought needed some development. And then, 1.4.1, 1.41.00, Trustee Development Budget. I think there needs to be some revision to that, which would clear up all of the expenditure issues for descriptions of funds and that, and how they're used. I think that would be a good one to add, so that we can clear things up there. And then, in the Board of Trustees' Leadership Training, there needs to be some cleaning up on the webpage, because it says, go to Tracy Morris, T. Morris, and I think she's gone right now, isn't she? So, that, and then Buildings and Grounds also, it shows Josh and Dan O'Connell on it, so just some, I'm looking at some cleanup. Thank you.
So, just a quick note, you're looking to review Policy 1.3.6, Policy 8.03.00.
Correct.
And Policy 1.41.00.
Correct.
And what exactly, again, would you like to see done, with the 8.03.00 Authorization of Expenditures?
At that point, she's looking for them to bring them back to a meeting, so that we can discuss it in the meeting, and then move forward with it, so it'd be just a early review of the policy.
Right.
So.
Thank you. And then I was going to ask one more thing, too. I know we were going to do descriptions on our, on the webpage with our pictures and everything.
Yep.
What we had done before, just so you guys are, and Jake, I think you might be aware of it, remember when Joan used to give us the sheet that said, fill out the information and give a brief thing of you? Not a big glorious thing, but a little bit about you, so that could go there, and then to have that we have met, because most of the boards are putting on that they've met their statutory requirements for 1, 3, and 5, we need to do that. And then, it's not to show the term that you were here from 2017 to 2023, it's if you were, have been on the board, they usually put the term that you started, and then it shows when your term expires. So, if you, and I'll just use myself as an example, 2015, you put an issue, you know, that was initially on there, but my term expires 2026, so it's 2017 to 2026, but it shows that you've been a board member for a longer period, just like Alicia would show that she's 2015, that she's been on too, so it would show that you've had tenure on the board. And most of the boards do show that, so that you see that there is a pattern of stability and term on there for the trustees.
And we actually did use to show the training that was on there, if we had the state required training, yes.
Yeah, we did. So, the training would be good, because most of the colleges now are doing it, so that everybody can see that we've met our requirements, because a lot of us did go to the June Conference and did meet all of our requirements. So, it's good to see that there's nothing that's, you know, left out.
Okay. And that falls on us a little bit, because Karen did ask about whether or not we wanted bios on there, and I don't think we gave her a definitive answer as a board, so, thank you, Karen, for asking, but.
We'll send you something.
Yeah, and Karen, what they used, what Joan used to do is, give us like, just a little bit of a brief summary about yourself, you know, she'd give you your work and just a little bit of what your organizations were. It wasn't much, it was just like maybe five sentences, but there's other, you could look at the other colleges to see what they put on there.
Trustee Lee, any Agenda Item Request?
No.
And trustee Harris?
No.
Chairman, if I may, just for a second, just a point of clarification, so, you know, we've, we've been taking notes on these, but in, in terms of the Agenda Request by trustee, I'm not seeing anything that will actually be on, placed on a future board agenda, I think there's, there's certainly some.
Goes under policy.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
That's right, because policy wasn't on here.
Okay.
So, I didn't see a policy point on here.
So, I just wanted to clarify that, no Agenda Items will be added as a result of this process, but we've got, we've got some things, certainly, okay. All right, just to clarify.
It was more for Michelle for policy than anything else, because there was, I didn't see any list on here for policy.
Okay.
And we did miss her report. Item 5.1, the President's Report.
Oh, thank you.
We can skip that one.
No.
We can skip that one.
Has the President's Reports popping up. I need to right a wrong, and all my hype, I failed to mention Jeff Heap, and so, you know, I'm, hopefully he won't make me pay for that for a while. So, all the other things I should have added, it pays our bills, and does our investments, and pays all of our employees, so if my check is off by a few decimal points, I'll understand why, and I will deserve, I will deserve all of it. So, Jeff, you have my apologies. I want to give a shout out to the Village of Shorewood. I had an opportunity to visit with the Village of Shorewood last night, accepted an invitation from Mayor Debold, got a chance to meet the trustees, some of whom have real deep, meaningful connections and actually years of service to JJC. So, I just want to give a shout out to the Shorewood community and thank Mayor Debold and the trustees for inviting me to be there, and just connect and share information about JJC. I want to give a shout out to Brian Robb, thank you for spending some time with us and, you know, further highlighting our relationship with Lion Electric. And with that, well, it was certainly, it's certainly been busy here at JJC, and just a huge shout out to the staff in OSA, in Roberto's Division, for just creating such an incredible experience for our students across all campuses, mind you. So, what you're seeing here, just some pictures of the events, Wiley's showing up in some of them, trustee Ellis is there, that's at the City Center, and then we had some food trucks here on the main campus, so just a great way to welcome students back and get the energy flowing back on our campuses. So, thank you to all the staff who made that possible. This was a fantastic event I had the opportunity to attend, along with our EBC staff, Dean Santiago, I'm hopefully not going to miss anyone, Escortino was there, KRT was there, I believe, if I'm missing anyone, I apologize, but this right here was something to celebrate. You most likely heard about Letta's connection to JJC as a whole, but I'm going to provide you with some very specific details, and as you pay close attention to the individuals' reference, and actually Brian Kincaid is over on the right-hand side, JJC, along with the Latino Economic Development Association, recognized their very first, all-in Spanish cohort for completion of a four-week Introduction to Entrepreneurship program. So, this is JJC out in the community, serving our Spanish-speaking community, along with our great partners at Letta, really thrilled with how that's developing and emerging, so just a huge shout out to everyone involved in making that big success, and I believe they moved it from the roof of the museum to the basement of the museum, and that was much appreciated, it was hot that day. And trustee Broderick hosted the Executive Committee Retreat, and if you take a look at some of the pictures there, all the trustee models, you can see, I'm, you know, most of the trustees participated in this event, it was a great celebration, as the Executive Committee and Committee Chairs from ICCTA visited JJC, just another opportunity to highlight all of the great things that we have going on at JJC. In the upper left-hand corner, you'll see an individual who's become a great mentor of mine, President Ross, made an appearance and helped with, helped facilitate a strategic planning session for the ICCTA. And thank you for Dr. Farmer and KRT for joining me to give all of the Executive Committee Members a tour. Well, this was a hot one, it definitely was a hot one, but shout out to Frankfurt and the Fall Festival, and trustees you see there, trustee Broderick is there, and we have trustee Bazinski there, you have the Namuos, you've got my brother, and then you've got Mayor Ogil and Kim, and I believe that's Officer O'Keefe there.
It is.
So, just a big, big shout out to the Frankfurt community, as you know, the Frankfurt Fall Fest is a big celebration in that area, and I, I hear good things about that town, just throw that out there.
Might choose to live there.
Might, might choose to think about living there one day. And kind of going back to ICCTA and ICP, which is the, which is the Illinois Community College Council of Presidents, really, really fascinating, so we run our meetings parallel, the trustees do and presidents do, appreciate trustee Broderick inviting me to present on dual credit and 12 by 12 by 12, and I suspect you'll hear more about that from some of our other trustees, so I won't steal their thunder too much, just appreciate the opportunity to share all the good work we're doing in being a statewide leader in dual credit. Two days ago, I visited Lance Copes at the Grundy Area Vocational Center, and the image you see over on the left-hand side, for those, if you're not aware, GAVC is growing, absolutely growing, so they have more demand than they can serve. As you probably know, Lance Copes, their director, is a member of our Grundy Expansion Team, and has been working with Dr. Farmer and the group to contribute to what our increased involvement, investment in Grundy County might look like. The image on the left-hand side, that's a home that students build over a two-year a two-year period. And so as many of you know, that's something I was involved in in the past, but that's a 3,000-square-foot home that they're building. So these aren't small homes that they're building. These aren't, you know, starter Habitat for Humanity 1,500-square-foot homes, no. So the students out there is getting a lot of great experience. I had a chance to visit CNA lab, medical assisting lab, welding, construction. I'm going to miss a few, digital media arts, and on and on and on. So thankful that Lance has agreed to be part of the Grundy Expansion Team, and just wanted to highlight his organization. We were able to celebrate our national champion in the Culinary Arts Competition. Culinary Arts, certainly, a signature program with JJC's. I'm not shy to say that. So not only did we celebrate the program itself and the national champion, but the team as well that participated. And that's a great shot of all the confetti. And Chef McGreal, if you're listening, please give us a warning when you shoot that off next time, because I wasn't quite sure what was happening. So thanks, and just a huge shout out to, to the culinary arts area. As I've mentioned a couple of times before, it's, it feels good when your leadership resonates, and this is an example of that. So the group of employees I'm recognizing this month, as I typically do in front of the board each month, is the math department. The math department was so inspired by the afternoon and day of service that we did as a greater college community, about 100 of us, and we plan to continue as an annual tradition. They did their own day of service as a department. So I just wanted to highlight and give a shout out to the math department and Heidi Line as their new chair for working with this incredible organization to serve our community. Chairman, appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Item five point two, representative to the JJC Foundation, Ms. Kristi Mulvey.
Good evening. I just have two quick things. As most of you know, my office is in event mode right now. Friday is our big event, and I want to thank all of you that are coming on Friday. Just one quick note, you'll come in the main entrance and you'll go to the registration table, and we'll hand you tickets. And then your ticket will be checked, and you want to keep your ticket in your hand because at the bottom it has your first complimentary drink at the bar. And so don't hand off your ticket to somebody because that's your first gift for, for coming to the event. But we're really looking forward to it. I have to say that I didn't imagine that we'd have to close reservations. We're at 450 people. We have 150 of our. What's really neat about it is 150 of those people are fine arts people. There are a whole community band of 90 people that have volunteered to come and play. There are steel band, our jazz ensemble, and our choir are all, all going to be performing. So it's going to be a great evening to really not only celebrate 50 years of the foundation, supporting the college, but I decided that the Rialto Theater is the best place to highlight our musicians in fine arts. So we're really excited about it. We've got some really, two past presidents will be there, JD Ross and Dr. Judy Mitchell, our first alumni president, Dr. Tom Streits will be in attendance. Sheila Sasso, the first foundation person that really started the Susan H. Wood, is coming. So we have some great honored people that are going to be attending, and we're really looking forward to it. So thank you for agreeing to come, and we hope that the evening will be great. And our master of ceremonies, I hope, is going to be all ready to go and looking good and.
Tennis shoes.
Yeah. No, yeah, he's it. And then I'm going to get done with that event and take a deep breath, and then October 1st, we're having our 5K run. So as you know, my office goes from one thing to the next, and I wear everybody out that comes in contact with me. But we're really excited. We have almost 300 runners right now. And remember that all of our events, 100% of our event proceeds go to scholarships. So none of our events pay, all of the tickets are paid for, for the event, but everything that, that is made on the events that we do goes all to scholarships. We have 10 new scholarships that we've gotten in the last 30 days that will be posted in October for our spring semester. So we're excited about that. Unless you have any questions, that's the end of my report.
Can we still sign up for the 5K run, or is that closed?
No, that's not closed. You can still do that. And you don't have to, you don't have to run. You can walk.
No, I prefer to run three minutes.
Okay, there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five point four, student trustee report. Ms. Ayesha Ellis.
You skipped the ICCTA report.
Oh, sorry. Five point three, representative to the ICCTA, Ms. Michelle Lee.
Okay. For those who are new at the Illinois Community College, the ICCTA stands for Illinois Community College Trustee Association and provides mandatory training and is an opportunity for all of the community colleges in Illinois to network, exchanging innovative ideas about exciting things our community colleges are doing, as well as problem-solving techniques we have, you, we have to overcome. The first day of the conference starts with the trustee roundtable. There is a list of topics provided, and we are all to vote on two or three to discuss. The two topics discussed at this year's conference were what are your college's efforts to offer the mental health of our students and faculty and staff? And the second one was what does your college do to encourage greater community involvement? We then took a break for lunch. After lunch, we attended a seminar on the outstanding, understanding dual credit. Dr. Namuo was our guest speaker. He spoke on 12 by 12 by 12, specifically dual enrollment versus dual credit. I really appreciated the way the information was presented, as it was not a repeat of the same information that we received here at our board meeting. Dr. Namuo's presentation was focused on the actual implementation of 12 by 12 by 12 and what that meant for community colleges. I didn't realize how ambitious his goals truly were and why this may have not been accomplished yet until this conference. Do, do we have the graph? Can we pull up the graph?
Oh, we don't.
We don't have the graph. That sucks. Okay, there was a graph.
Disappointing. That's disappointing. The word is disappointing.
I'm sorry. That's my natural reaction. Okay. Okay, there was a graph, and in the graph, at the bottom was purple, and it was the students that already are coming to JJC. And then in the middle, there was orange, and it was the larger portion, it was about 50% or so. I'm going to say we were in the, in the teens, tweens, or maybe low twenties, but I think it was tweens. I think it was 13%. So the orange are those students who are already going to universities, who are already, you know, more than likely to go to a university over JJC. Okay, I'm going to get back to this. So the purple expressed the number of students that are already chosen to attend JJC. The orange expressed the students that are already chosen to attend some type of post-secondary school. You see, while dual credit was initially, will initially increase our enrollment, we may lose some students from the purple who participate in the dual enrollment, as they may now feel prepared to go to a university over a community college after high school. Dr. Namuo saw through those initial, that initial loss of students. He understood what everyone else did. This program will help advance some high school students' enrollment and success rate at universities. What Dr. Namuo was able to see that others were not was the 30% of individuals in that gray area who were not likely to attend post-secondary school at all being left behind. This was unacceptable, and his vision included the entire community. Giving these students a chance to gain college credit in high school makes them more likely to feel confident and empowered to seek post-secondary education. Dr. Namuo also noted that the demographics of these students aligns perfectly with our current student body, and he is excited to welcome them into our community. I am proud to have a president whose vision is inclusive to the entire community, and that his innovative ideas turned what seemed to be a problem into an opportunity. As a board, Klein came to us and said, here's my initiative, and I'm going to make it happen. And he did, in a very short period of time, as it is launching in the fall. I can say, after listening to his presentation, I had no idea what it took for him to achieve this goal in such a short time. Panel, panel member and superintendent, Dr. Becca LeMond, explained they lack, the lack of teachers and staff credentialing problems are serious concerns at this point. She explained her excitement about 12 by 12 by 12. However, the implementation poses the, however, the implementation process on its, has its own set of red tape for her and other superintendents alike. We discuss possible solutions for the future on these problems with employment and teachers. However, it is only through the help and support and encouragement of our community college that superintendents can feel empowered to take on this ambitious goal. Thank you, Dr. Namuo, for your time and dedication to making sure everyone in our community has a better chance to attend post-secondary school. I would like to express superintendent Dr. LeMond's concern about state regulations, the mandate to accelerate, the computer science mandate, the foreign language mandate, among other legislative mandates she feels are nearly impossible to implement without proper staffing. As a community college, I feel we should be asking ourselves, what can we do to incentivize teacher, teaching degrees? Following the seminar, we break off into committee meetings. Committees are chosen by simply attending the meeting. I attended the awards committee and the public relations committee meetings. Diane attended the awards committee, and as the newest trustee, she was chosen as the committee's chair, vice chair, sorry, vice chair. Congratulations, Diane. She also attended the diversity committee meeting. Jim and Maureen attended the finance committee meetings. Finally, all trustees are encouraged to attend the government relations and public policy committee meeting. The following morning, during the ICCTA board meeting, all committees give a report to the ICCTA board of representatives, at the ICCTA Board of Representatives meeting. I hope that helps summarize and give you a better understanding of what we do at these conferences. We are not hanging out. We are in meetings all day long, learning, okay, and networking. And then I'd like to give an opportunity to Jim, or Maureen, or Diane, if anything you'd like to share about the ICCTA, if you'd like briefly, because I think I really took a long time. Sorry.
Good dang it. Um, you know, you did well. I enjoyed it. I am excited to be the vice chair of the awards committee. And what I wanted to say was, I was going to go through all of them, but there's a lot of them, but I won't do that. But I will say that hopefully here at JJC, we can get as many award recipients. After all, we're the first community college in the nation and should be shedding light on the exceptional students, staff, and trustees here at JJC. So when you get the information, please take a look at the deadlines so that when you send them in, we can go over it and make sure we get some great individuals out of JJC. Thank you.
I'm just going to throw a couple of things back out there. It was really, you know, fun watching how JJC was represented in this event, everything from trustee Broderick being the new president, the presentation by Dr. Namuo, that was really well-received by the room. There was a lot of good questions that came out of it. It was fun to watch our two trustees that are first-time visitors to that convention, you know, taking active roles. And although a lot of it, like Michelle said, was a lot of networking and other things, I can tell you, I sat in the finance committee more out of curiosity. They had just completed an audit. The audit book was as big as most audits are. There was one mistake in the book that trustee Broderick was able to note right away, was the only thing that, you know, stood out to her, was, you know, correcting the book. Not an insignificant number. It was a negative number that should have been a positive or vice versa, but what that ends up being is it's the same error in opposite directions from zero, and it really skewed the data, so much so that they took the books back. So behind the scenes and what goes on in there, our, you know, our representatives of the college here were, you know, very sound with what they were there for. So, anything else?
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I was excited to see all of you guys there. It was really warm and welcoming to see JJC's presence. We needed to see that. That was great. And I got to say, Dr. Namuo, you did a fantastic job. And I love the fact that we had a superintendent that gave her position to and a student. We included the student. We had three students at this, and that's one of my dual role, or one of my key role or key goals, is to get more student involvement. And to see that we had students there and one that was on the panel that wasn't afraid to answer the questions that were thrown at her, she did great. And she shared, which I thought was great, the AP issues versus the dual enrollment. That really had a significant impact. And then I got to see the surveys afterwards of how significant the, the, the presentation was. It was kudos to everybody that was there. You know, Dr. Namuo, JJC, you did a great job with leading JJC. And I think all the questions that you guys asked when you were there to ask in that were perfect to ask, to keep it going. It was a three-hour seminar. Yeah, it was three hours. You talked three hours.
No.
No, I, you know what? I actually somehow skipped over this in my report. I have everybody's name, and I do want to give them a shout out. So it was Dr. Namuo, and then Dr. Becca LeMond was, is from Ball Chat and Custard Five. She's a superintendent there. She is so knowledgeable and amazing. I loved her, truly enjoyed every, all of her knowledge. Student Eleanor Stuckley from Lincolnland, literally, she was the reason we were there for so long, because we all kept on asking so many questions to this poor girl, and she did such a great job at answering them all or deferring them to the proper, the proper guest speaker. And then there was Brian Durham, the director of the ICCCB. So just wanted to make sure that I did get their names out there in my report.
Yeah. And just so everybody knows, any of you guys can go to these meetings. The next one will be November 10th, which will be on RFPs and ERPs. And any of the committees are awards, finance, public relations, diversity, trustee education and leadership in government relations and public policy. Any of you can get involved. And I was so thrilled when I heard, when I got the text that said that, that Diane was the vice of the awards. I was like, oh, my gosh, yes. We have made some headway with JJC, because it is funny when, and, and Dr. Namuo knows this, when we introduce ourselves as JJC, we don't say we're the oldest. They all wait to hear us say the first community college. So it is recognition. So that was great. Thank you.
Okay. Five point four, the student trustee report.
Hello and good evening, everyone. I wanted to start my report by taking a moment to express my gratitude for taking part in JJC tradition at last, last month's convocation and day of service. It was truly uplifting to see the staff, faculty, and administration of JJC come together for a day of community and service. During the event, I had the pleasure of joining Kelly Rota Tinelli and other members of our JJC community at the Boys and Girls Club, and it was an amazing experience. I had a lot of fun. Thank you all once again for allowing me to be a part of this wonderful event, and it was my pleasure to be involved. This semester, the Office of Student Activities organized Welcome Week events at our main Romeo Ville and City Center campuses. At main campus, the Welcome Week events took place from August 22nd through the 24th. Students engaged in various activities such as karaoke, checking out department resource tables, character art, and trying delicious food from food trucks, and much more. During the ICCTA Executive Committee Retreat on August 18th through the 19th, I gained insights into the latest legislative changes affecting community colleges, as well as the current goal and interest of our Illinois Community College Trustee Association. And on Saturday, September 9th, I participated in a birdhouse installation project with our Phi Theta Kappa chapter. It was an incredible experience, and we all had a lot of fun. Our goal was to install eight birdhouses, and I believe we accomplished that. During the project, our advisor, Professor Morrison, taught me how to cut pipes, and we all took turns forming the birdhouses. Student Government is sponsoring Constitution Day on Friday, September 15th. This event aims to improve civic engagement through voter registration and education for our students. Our Sustainability Union will be hosting the next Environmental Justice Speaker Session on October 4th from 12 to 1:00 p.m. in Room 8161. This session will focus on fighting food insecurity with the Northern Illinois Food Bank. And our mental health and wellness staff has planned a lot of events for students this semester. In the middle, you'll see the QPR training, which teaches non-professionals to recognize suicide warning signs, start a dialogue, and guide individuals to seek professional help. Taboo Thursdays are monthly virtual discussions on taboo topics related to substance abuse, sexuality, relationships, and more. These discussions are hosted on Zoom to ensure confidentiality and comfort. And the expressive therapy groups are held every Tuesday from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. The first session was held this past Tuesday, during which students created collages with tissue paper to express their feelings from the previous week. In the next session, students will be exploring the theme of the mask we wear, and will be decorating actual masks to explore our authentic self versus the mask we wear around others. This semester, the Office of Student Activities also has a lot planned for students to enjoy. Our Club Recruitment Fair themed a super sweet Main Street this. Our Club Recruitment Fair themed, a super sweet Main Street this semester at main campus has started today and will continue until tomorrow. Our student clubs have joined forces with the goal of recruiting and informing students about their respective clubs. We are offering various giveaways, including ice cream, OSA t-shirts, and much more. We'll also be having Main Street at our Romierville and City Center campuses. And our open recreation is held every Friday, October 6th, until October 6th, providing students with the opportunity to gather at the picnic grove from 12 to 1:00 p.m. and enjoy sports and community. This week's activity will be bad men. Thank you all for your time and enjoy the rest of your week.
Thank you.
So just so you know, if you guys want to go to the Main Street, I think I'm going to try to pop in tomorrow between 10 and 1 o'clock, I think is. Is that what the time is? No. So it looks like I've gone a couple of times, and it's a very interesting activity to see, so.
And those pets were adorable that were at the wellness. That was really great. And do you need any other additional registrars? Because I'm a registrar if you need to have people to vote, register to vote.
We could talk after the meeting.
Sounds good.
Item 5.5, Building and Grounds Committee Report.
She's just removing from one report to another report. I'll just be filling in as need be, so.
So in design at the moment, we have the replacement of the IT service room AC unit, which went before the board tonight. We also have the replacement of the T building boiler with the condensing boiler, which will go before the board in January.
Yep, so the, the crack unit, which is the, which I thought was kind of working because it's a crack AC unit, but, but it actually protects our servers, which is pretty important in, in the system here. So that'll go before the board meeting for approval in November. And like Ayesha said, the condensing boiler is going to go in January, so.
For project bids, the replacement tile for the ECC playground was slightly over budget. We discussed that tonight. In construction at the moment, we have the remodel for G building restrooms, which is 65% complete. They're currently working on the wall tile. The replacement for G building switchgear and B building main power transformer. We're currently waiting on the switchgear, and we currently have the main power transformer.
Yep, yep, so, and, no, I think we have the switchgear, but this, this is a repair that's going to have to be done after, after hours because it's a pretty important one for knocking out. So, so that is budgeted for, so, but we're waiting to schedule that as well, so, so, and then.
The CNA lab at Romierville is near complete, and it's expected to be completed by spring semester. The adjunct faculty center remodel is almost completed, and they're just doing touch-ups. The EHS office remodel is currently in demo. Well, the demo was done, and they're just working on the frame-ups. Now I'll let you do the CBD project.
Yeah, the CBD project, as you know, which she talked about, it was, they defaulted, the original vendor defaulted because they weren't, didn't meet the requirements. So Cryer and Olson has been approved. They have met all the requirements. They're going to order the equipment, and that looks like they're hoping to get it done in probably about a year, I would guess, within the year. But if it can't be done within the year, unfortunately, the following year we're going to have to do that, that replacement. Cryer and Olson is going to have to store the equipment, so that's not going to be our responsibility as well, so. But thank you again for the report, Ayesha. You did a great job, so.
Item 5.6, the Board Policy Committee Report.
So I am so super excited. Karen Kissler stepped up to the plate again. God bless her heart. I mean, honestly. No, she's amazing. I actually have a binder. I, I, I love physical things, so I appreciate the binder. We didn't have.
All I had to do was buy you a binder and say you appreciate whatever I do for you.
It has to be filled with paperwork and very well put together for me.
I can't do that.
We didn't have anything today, but we did meet. Garcia again is not here today. We are going to have a lot on the agenda next month, so you'll be hearing from me then.
Can you capture the three items from earlier?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, the, we didn't, the grades was on the second approval. Consent agenda.
No, no, I mean the three items that we had in discussion that she would like to add.
Oh, yes, I wrote those all down. They're, they're in my, in my notes. Got it.
Item 5.7, the Finance Committee Report.
There was no finance committee meeting this month, so, short and simple, we will probably meet next month and have a report for you then.
Item 5.8, trustee updates. And when we did the moment of silence, we spent some time for Bernadine O'Keefe, Aunt and Godmother trustee Broderick. If you could just share a little bit before her, or about her, before we start the clock.
My aunt?
Yes.
She was my only aunt, my godmother, and my confirmation sponsor. She was my mom's only sister, so she was born on 8/28/28, and my cousin had wanted her time of death to be 8/28, but it was 8/18 because 8/28 just stuck in her head. But she was 95 years old, and she was the last touch to mom. She was one that called me every single day when I was in the hospital with COVID and made sure that I was okay. And I felt like my mom was touching me through my aunt, so it's going to be a hard loss. Thank you.
Thank you. We will start over on this side. Do you have any updates for the board, Ms. Ellis? Jake?
Just very sorry for your loss, Maureen.
Thank you.
I'm just very sorry for your loss.
Thank you. I just want to give you a little bit of an update on the, the executive committee. We had about 35 executive members here on the 18th and 19th. I was so excited to have JD Ross, our emeritus president, be the moderator to go over my goals because we stressed and worked on things such as community college backglow-rite initiative, trustee engagement, which is what we definitely want, and I'm going to be working with Ayesha on that one because we talked to Brian, and Brian Durham of the ICCB wants to bring things back so that the trustees have the same group, the student trustees have the same group as what the ICCTA trustees have. Enterprise Resource Planning, which is the next seminar November 10th in Schaumburg. Dual Credit, which Dr. Nmoo did for us. And Federal Grant Opportunities, which are going to be the subject matter for our March, yeah, no, June, June 1, and March, we're going to talk about, what do they call that, AI? We're going to be talking about AI because AI seems to be coming up as an issue of workforce and who's going to train people to do that because if people are doing the automation systems, who's going to prepare and get those things ready? And we had a great presentation by our student trustee. Do you know that 60% of this trustees are 60 years or older, and 10% are under 40? We were in a little bit of shock when he gave us that, but I guess those whole people like to be trustees. And then we did, we did talk, Brian Durman brought up about their fiscal year, what they're working on. $500,000 in state grant allocated to the Illinois College Community Board for free GED tests, and $300,000 was to ensure that all the Illinois students would get it. And the next day, I really appreciated, you know, trustees Harris and trustees Morales coming to the group meeting. And I, I loved you guys being at dinner, which was Michelle Lee and Jim, Chair Budzinski and Ayesha, as well as trustee Harris and Morales. It was great. You guys got to know a lot of the people. And the next day, we talked about the ICCTA commitments, and we went through strategy planning and all of the things that are correlating with the strategy planning and my goals, and it seems like we're very, very connected. Thank you.
Trustee Lee.
Quick question. Do we have a legislative review? We used to have a lady who came and gave a legislative review. What happened to her?
She comes for quarterly.
She's going to, she's going to come again? Okay, because there was just a legislative review with ICCTA, and she had a lot to say, so I'm not going to take that job and do any of that if we have somebody coming. Okay, I have, I have something to say to Carl because he's leaving us.
You're going to cry again.
No, I'm not going to cry again, I don't think.
I'm not crying.
I know. Okay, so Carl, when I think about the character, morals, and values I have experienced, you display in my short time working with you, I am reminded, reminded of something God said to a prophet named Ezekiel. Son of man, I have made you a watchman for the house of Israel. Whenever you hear a word from my mouth, give them a warning from me. If I say to the wicked man, you will surely die, but you do not speak out to warn him from his wicked ways to save his life, that wicked man will die for his sin, and I will hold you accountable. But if you warn a wicked man, and he does not turn from his wickedness or his wicked ways, he will die in his sin, but you will have saved yourself. Now, if a righteous man turns from his righteousness and commits iniquity, and I put a stumbling block before him, he will die. If you do not warn him, he will die in his sin, and the righteous acts he did will not be remembered, and I will hold you responsible. But if you warn that righteous man not to sin, and he does not sin, he will indeed live because he heeded your warning, and you will have saved yourself. Whoever listens, let him listen, and whoever refuses, let him refuse, for they are a rebellious house. Over the past two and a half years, I have watched you lead the righteous down a narrow path and counsel those who lack understanding against wickedness. Thank you wholeheartedly for your services to the college and community. You will sincerely be missed. May God bless you, and all you do protect you and keep you close to Him.
Thank you, Carl. We're going to miss you very much.
Trustee Harris.
I, I just want to go back to the conference. When we had the roundtable, every college trustee had an opportunity to say what they're going to do for mental health or whatever else it was.
It was what they do to outreach in the community.
Oh, yeah, and the outreach in the community. And each college had something to say, and we had already done it. And so I thought, wow, Julia Junior College is first. So I just wanted you guys to know that you are already doing your thing, step ahead of the game. So I just wanted to say that, that I did notice that. I thought that was.
We are the leader. We are the leader.
You know what? Somebody else is doing luncheons for the community in impoverished areas, and we're not doing that, so outreach to the community. I took notes on that one.
The meals, the meals was.
We do Meals on Wheels, though, so nobody else is doing, or the, what is it called? Not Meals on Wheels, it's.
The food pantry.
That is a thing too somewhere.
Come back to trustee Broderick.
Yeah, I forgot to mention this. Our ICCTA office is launching every student for every community. And it's basically, we are the community colleges of Illinois, powerhouses of opportunity at the grassroots. We define success student by student and community by community. And this is what is going to be going out in the fall, so I will have plenty of these for everybody to have and to stick and pass around that you've, you've got it. And then just for all of you guys to know too, January is looking for a regional meeting, and our regional chair is out of Maureen Valley, but they're looking for us to also share and do one together with them. So there's six colleges that are in our level, or our area, that want to get together. So look for January because they'll be starting to put those out, and Karen will get the information once she gets it from Maureen Valley.
Shout out to KRT because she is on the team who is, you want to hold it up again? Designing this.
Did you do this?
Item 5.9, the Chairs Report. And I'm looking at two clocks here. This one's closer to the nine. So to get you out of here at nine, I'm not going to do a chair report. We're going to write to adjournment. Call for a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.